I couldn't find it.
Kurt, I text you and called you. Did you get them?
I got, but I wanted to ask, why did they want to have regular monthly meetings?
They're, it's just a CSC, CSE, two by two meetings, just to keep apprised of upcoming projects.
And they want to meet on Thursdays?
The third, they said quarterly, but it's technically not normal quarters. I think it's Thursday.
Oh, CST.
We'll have to meet.
Maybe later, I just can be honest.
Yeah, Thursdays. We're back on again.
Good evening, everybody. Today is Tuesday, February 18, 2020. Regular city council meeting. Call the meeting in order, please.
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Here.
Councilmember Farmer.
Here.
Councilmember Campion.
Here.
Councilmember Lamson.
Here.
Mayor Sandu.
Here.
Please stand for the silent prayer and flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One allegation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Gina, may I have a replay statement, please?
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse cable system. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air Friday, February 21st at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, February 22nd at 9:00 a.m. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch.
Next agenda item is the council. May we have any agenda approval, addition and deletion?
I'd like to pull F3 from the consent.
F3 from the consent.
I'd like to pull F2.
All right, thank you. There is no regular presentation. Next agenda item is public comment.
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the city council on non-agenda items. The public comment section is for the city council to receive comments, except for brief responses to questions. No discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Speaker cards are located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers. Once completed, forward the speaker card to the clerk. Those persons wishing to speak on any item scheduled on the agenda will be given an opportunity to do so at that time the item is being considered.
Thank you. There is any speaker? Before we put the public speaker, we have a surprise presentation. We are here. Ronald Lawrence, President of the California Police Chief Association. Can you come to the podium?
Thank you, Mayor Sandu and members of the council. My name is Ron Lawrence. I'm the president of the California Police Chiefs Association, and I'm here tonight representing all 333 municipal police chiefs throughout the entire state of California to honor your police chief, Todd Sockman. I'm joined by my admin assistant Samantha Lofus. We both work for the Citrus Heights Police Department, and ironically, her mother is Chief Sockman's executive assistant also. So we have a unique connection there. But we're here to honor your chief because of his service and dedication to not only our association, but our policing profession in general. Our association is a nonpartisan group. We don't care about one's political affiliation. We care about one thing only, and that's public safety. We care about protecting our communities and ensuring that we prevent anyone from becoming victims in the state of California. So we often find ourselves down at the state capitol dealing with legislation, dealing with different things at the governor's office, at the attorney general's office, and your chief Sockman has done an outstanding job throughout his service with the California Police Chiefs Association, representing us, representing me, and as a dear friend as well. I wanted to personally thank him in person and in front of his mayor and his council because he did an outstanding job. His leadership, his calm presence, his ability to deal with a variety of people down at the state capitol has been remarkable, and I want to thank him for his dedication. And I have a plaque here on behalf of the police chiefs that I'd like to honor you with, Todd. This is to Chief Todd Sockman. He was a member of our board of directors. An appreciation for your service to the California Police Chiefs Association as a member of our board of directors.
Thanks, Ron. Appreciate it.
Do you guys want to get closer? Thank you so much.
No speech?
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Come down to recognize our chief, and he's always doing an excellent job. Thank you.
And Mayor, the only thing I want to say is, so Ron and I have been friends for 20-plus years. It comes full circle. He was my first field training officer in West Sacramento, and so we hit it off then. We've been friends ever since. If it wasn't for him, I would not have, I served a little over three years on the board of directors for the California Police Chiefs Association. If it wasn't for him, I would never have taken that big leap. So thank you, Ron. You're a great friend, and you truly have represented the state of California and all of our police chiefs. I wouldn't want that president job. He has traveled up and down the state advocating for law enforcement up and down the state, and I really appreciate all your efforts. So thank you, Ron.
Thank you. So next agenda item is... Okay, go ahead on that public speaker.
Public speaker, Jay Vandenberg.
Hello. My name's Jay Vandenberg. I just wanted to bring up a couple of things real quick. On the council agenda report back in July 16, 2019, I just want to read a couple of things from it relating to the market property. This would be an intended, this would not be intended to modify the language of AB 3773 to redirect revenue generated by the market property, but merely to modify the use currently allowed to operate the property. One of the most important parts of this ex, of this explanatory process will be to the financial feasibility analysis to ensure that revenue streams to the Parks and Recreation Department is not negatively impacted. But on the agreement to negotiate, it states, "The city may authorize development, and the developer may purchase and develop certain real properties commonly referred to as the city market property." Negotiations hereunder shall be based on development acceptance, which shall be considered with the above restrictions used allowed under AB 33 and additional approvals from the state legislature to modify the use of the current allowed site of AB 373. And then further down, it says, "For the lease or sale of the site to develop." So those four or five statements seem to directly contradict each other. And I sent you all an email. I realize you can't reply to me here, but I sent you all an email. Hopefully, you all got it. If not, maybe I'll resend it. I would like clarification on the city's position because, to me, it's, I don't believe anybody's trying to harm the city, but you're on one hand saying you're going to protect the assets and the income. On the other hand, it says, it strictly says it could sell them. So I would like clarification on that. And then as we move forward with this process, I would kindly ask that you consider the businesses directly across the street in the strip mall. You see some of the lots are empty or the sections are empty. So if what's approved there is in direct competition with the businesses existing, it's going to kill that strip mall. This will probably be, it's a bright and shiny jewel that people will want to go check out and see, and it may siphon off the businesses. You know, we have no idea what's going to be there, but just please consider that as you move forward. Thank you.
Mr. Vandenberg, could you resend your email to me? Because I have not received one.
Yeah, yeah, I will, and I'll, I'll double-check the address because sometimes you guys are down, so not all the emails get through, and I may not have the .org on there, so I'll double-check.
Okay, thank you.
Can somebody forward it maybe to as well?
Yeah, I can. Can I forward it to you?
Thank you, Jay. This agenda, you know, this topic is not on agenda item, but certainly for your clarification, you can contact the staff. If there is not, then we can, you know, clarification, you 101. Thank you. Next agenda item is reports by city council members on regional board, commissions and committees. Vice Mayor Lozano.
I have nothing to report. I reported out last Tuesday, but I do have a Sacramento area council of governments meeting on Thursday, and at our next regularly scheduled meeting, I'll report out on that.
Councilmember Farmer.
Yeah, I have, I as well don't have anything to report, except that I too will be attending the upcoming CAS meeting in the absence of councilmember Campion who can't make it. So I'm looking forward to that. First time I've been to one of those, so.
Councilmember Campion.
I have nothing to report tonight.
Councilmember Lamson.
We have a air quality board meeting coming up next week, and nothing else except that I attended the Liberty Ranch FFA crab dinner fundraiser Saturday, and those people can raise money. So that was a good crab feed.
Thank you. You know, I have a STA Sacramento Transportation Authority meeting on last week, and we discussed proposed Mayor A transportation expenditure. And last time, when I went over there, the meeting before, they added some board members on the ad hoc committee. So they bring the proposal, have a little bit change on that, but basically they did 60% streets, roads and highways, 40% transit and railroads. And the next meeting will be in February 27. I believe on that meeting can we make a decision of the whole board, which, which we accepting their expenditure plan. Thank you. So the next agenda item is information consent calendar. It is recommended that item 1 through 3 to be acted on simultaneously until separate discussion and action is requested by council. There's a two item, F3 and F2 was pulled from the, from the consent calendar. So if there is anybody have the motion on consent calendar except F2 and F3.
So moved.
Again? No, we pulled, we pulled them.
F1.
Yeah.
Except F2 and F3.
I move to approve item F1.
Second, sorry, I heard that you...
Farmer.
I had a, I had a fast question on that. I'm sorry.
So on that?
Yeah, on F1. I didn't realize it was F1. I was looking through my notes. So can I pull that, I guess? Or can I just ask a question real quick?
Yeah.
Or what's? It was just regarding the, and I apologize, Claire. I just had a question about the card services breakdown, the line item, the second line item listed as finance department, and then it says surplus property, $16,284. I just wanted you to clarify what that was.
That particular credit card is used for emergency purposes. So it was used in December for an emergency purchase having to do with the ransomware recovery. And if you notice further down, it says prepaid amount. There was a charge there, and then a prepayment already made on this account. It does say surplus property, which was the original intent of that card, but it's really used for surplus property and emergencies.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying. Thank you. Thanks.
All right. Motion moved by Vice Mayor Lozano, second by Councilmember Lamson. We have a roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
Mayor Sandu.
Aye. Motion carried to 5 to 0. Next item is F2, Amendment Number 7 to Agreement for South County Transit Link Sharing of Responsibility and Cost.
Again, I just had a quick question, and I apologize, Tom. I didn't shoot this over to you. I was struggling getting my email, sending stuff until today. The number two on the resolution just says to authorize the city manager to negotiate new responsibilities and cost savings, cost sharing agreement with Sacramento County. I was just curious, like, are we gonna, I mean, are we, what are we negotiating for? Like, are we going to try to, could you maybe elaborate a little bit on the arrangement and like what we try to do when we negotiate that?
Yeah, I'm going to actually let Mike Selling, who has been working this particular agreement through the process, respond to that.
Yeah. Yeah, Councilmember Farmer, essentially, the agreement between the city and the county right now for the South County Transit Services was originally done back in 2009, as you probably saw on the staff report, and it's been amended now. This would be the seventh time, mostly just for extensions, but once to add the Galt commuter express into Sacramento bus. So there's a few other things, like the county pays for the buses currently, and the city pays for other things as far as for the, the rent, or what was the rent on, on the building space that they were there. So now that the city has purchased the building, there's questions like that that have come up, and I think the county has some other questions that they want to, you know, negotiate with us, basically, a new agreement. There's some different, you know, with electrification and things like that that may be coming in. If there's some kind of a charging station or whatnot, those kinds of things, I think, are some of the questions and issues that we want to, you know, address. So, so this will give us that timeframe until September to go through the negotiation process. But we have a really good working relationship. As far as the services that we have now, we have sufficient funding for, so there isn't really, you know, a potential out of cost, so to speak, to either party on this. It's really just who's responsible for what kind of thing, so.
That, really what it's saying there is two things. One, recognizing that there will be some issues that we'll end up negotiating with the county. But the second thing it's saying is that all of that will then come back to the city council for review and approval.
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, it was mainly, what came to mind is what you said. Does, with our new, the new building that we purchased, is there going to be different arrangements or negotiations?
Potentially, yes. Correct.
And I just have one question, and it sparked as I was sitting here. I think that what I got out of this is the crux of this is, is that we need to extend to September 30th so that we can have time to negotiate. So at, at or before September 30th, all of it will come back to us. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any public comment on this? Any more discussion with the council member? Any more discussion with the council member? Can you read for recommendation action?
Adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute amendment number seven to the agreement with Sacramento County Transit Link, sharing of responsibilities and costs to extend the term from April 30th, 2020 to September 30th, 2020, and authorizing the city manager to negotiate a new responsibilities and cost sharing agreement with Sacramento County.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
The motion by Vice Mayor Lozano, second by Councilmember Lamson. May I have a vote call, please?
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
Mayor Sandu.
Aye. Motion carry with five to zero. So next agenda item is, I think, F3 with Councilmember Lamson, Campion.
I had a question I'd asked of Mike, I don't know, were you able to find something in the resolution or?
Yeah, well, in the resolution, there's a reference at the, at the top.
Yes.
And apparent, just made for everyone, the question was, is there a reference to the tentative map condition? And, and there is a reference to it in the second whereas of the resolution, but I think, Councilmember, you were asking about, is there a reference to it in the subdivision agreement? Is that?
That was, that was my question because it says subdivision is meant the substantive requirements, but not all of the requirements. I mean, when you read through here, there are conditions that.
Right.
That are activated or become effective once the development is underway or ongoing.
Yes, correct.
Normally, in, in the past, we used to have a statement in the subdivision, subdivision agreement which incorporated by reference or incorporated those conditions. So I'm wondering why that was dropped.
Yeah, I'd asked Mr. Forrest if he was aware and, and I don't, were you able to find anything, Bill?
Good evening, Bill Forrest, senior civil engineer with the Public Works Department. I believe the conditions of approval are, are incorporated within the subdivision agreement under recitals A and B where it makes reference to the tentative subdivision map as previously approved by the city. And when that came forward, you actually, you had a map, a tentative map as well as conditions of approval. So to me, those, by that single statement of a tentative subdivision map, I believe that links the, the conditions of approval that were approved along with the tentative subdivision map.
We can certainly make sure that there's a clear statement in there about the conditions of approval being incorporated by reference.
Yeah, because it just simply says that it was prepared in accordance with subdivision map act, at least that's the section I'm looking at.
And then it further goes on the subdivision ordinance of the city, which is the development code, and then, and lastly, under recital A and the tentative subdivision map previously approved by the city. So to me, that's the linkage of the conditions of approval because when the tentative subdivision map was approved, not only were you approving a map, but you're also approving the conditions of approval and then if there were any subsequent general plan or rezone.
Well, the, the concern I had was, is that, I remember there was a case in the past where, and that, which is why the subdivision agreements were changed, there was a challenge on one of the conditions, the conditions were not part of the subdivision agreement and had not been recorded. Now it goes for recordation, but there's no tracking of the conditions of approval other than a vague reference such as this. I would like to see it tightened up.
Sure.
Because it, I, I think it's, I think it's unclear, it's unclear to me.
There's also the statement on the final map itself, for example, under the community developments.
Correct.
Everybody say, examine the final map, essentially the same as the tentative map approved by planning commission of the city of Galt and that all conditions of tentative. So there's also that linkage. So if you will, you know, when I present the final map to the community development director as well as the city engineer, we go through the conditions of approval and make sure that they have been satisfied.
But then it goes on to read, or are guaranteed to be provided for, there is no guarantee that I see.
I would say that's the performance bond.
My suggestion would just be to.
I had a disagreement on that.
My suggestion would just be to, to make the motion to approve the final map with the condition that the subdivision improvement be revised, agreement be revised, simply to clarify that the conditions of approval are incorporated by reference.
So moved.
And I'm okay with that.
Thank you. Any public comment?
Yeah, I, I have a question that was around this. Is this, it refers to the, the map being approved has the offsite improvements, the things that are not, you know, that surround the development, that they were trying to do like handicap ramps and stuff, is this the project that, I'm just kind of remembering the safety meeting, is this a project that they were going to do a stop sign as part of it? They were going to do that early on?
Yes, and that is the, making the intersection of Walnut Avenue and Elk Hills Drive, always stop. That was completed last year.
It was, okay, shows how often I'm over there, so, okay. I, I just set, set off a light bulb for me, all right, thank you.
I'll second the motion.
All right, Dana, can you read that recommended action? F3.
Adopt a resolution approving the final map for Veranda at River Oaks and authorizing the filing and recordation thereof and authorizing the city manager to execute the subdivision improvement agreement with LA Homes Inc. and the filing and recordation thereof. We're going to change.
With the amendment that the subdivision agreement be revised to include explicit language of the conditions of approval are incorporated by reference.
And I'm typing, so I have to look at it.
And motion by Councilmember Campion, second by Vice Mayor Lozano. May I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
Mayor Sandu.
Aye. The motion carry with five to zero. Thank you. Next agenda item is schedule matter notice of public hearing. And there is no public hearing today, regular calendar, city manager's office. City council member appoint to Sacramento homeless policy council.
Mayor Sandu, members of the council, good evening. I don't know if this is working, but we'll try. The county of Sacramento and the cities of Citrus Heights, Elk Grove, Galt, Ileton, Folsom, Rancho Cordova and Sacramento have formed a homelessness policy council. The council's mission is to provide leadership on the, the greater homelessness issues within the Sacramento region. And although this particular policy council will not, you know, vote on, necessarily on in the institution of, of certain projects and programs, it is nonetheless an effort of the county and the cities to meet several times a year to discuss homelessness generally, to work with the Sacramento Homeless Continuum of Care Advisory Board and the Sacramento Steps Forward Board of Directors on homelessness issues generally and to provide input, certainly input relevant for this city to that particular policy group. And so they're looking for the city council to make an appointment from one of the members of the council to that board or to that policy committee. And again, they'll meet, they anticipate meeting about three times per year and, and so they're, they're asking each of the cities to, to make an appointment. And with that, I'd ask the council to consider that appointment.
I have some questions about it, Tom.
Yeah, go ahead.
I was just trying, I know this is newly formed, so I mean, I guess we really don't know exactly what its purpose, but I was just trying to understand exactly what it's going to be doing because it says it's, it's a policy board, but it clearly uses language that it's not going to set any policy.
Right.
So I just confused, it says it's basically a deliberative body and then so I was thinking, okay deliberative, and then I, you know, looked more at the definition of that, it's basically just a discussion board. So I mean, what is the real purpose of this?
That is essentially how I read it too, but I think that the purpose is to gain valuable input from the perspective of how homelessness is affecting each individual community. I think that every community is probably affected in different ways, some perhaps more significant than others, but yet there may be a need for certain types of programs or connection to resources that the various communities want to talk about or at least advocate for, for the homelessness in their, the homeless in their particular communities. And so I think this is an outreach effort to gain that valuable input from each of the underlying jurisdictions.
Does it say, I might have missed it when I was reading through this, but other than the policy, other than the council members that are appointed from, says two from Sacramento and one from Galt, Ileton and so on, is there anybody else that's supposed to sit in on these, like people that actually are the ones that set policy to listen?
So I, this is a group that, so the policy group that would be formed, say, of the various council members throughout the, the Sacramento city region and county region would then meet with the, the Sacramento Steps Forward folks and the, the other group is the Continuum of Care Advisory Board for the purpose of informing them about homelessness in the underlying jurisdictions and being part of the deliberation, but not necessarily a voting member on some policy enactment, but being part of that deliberation as to homelessness and perhaps steps forward in addressing homelessness issues.
I think to be more specific, I think I was trying to figure out if it was going to be just a group of, you know, two or three or whatever, however many groups that, whose, whose goal is to work with homeless or in whatever manner, just sitting in with this council and hearing their discussion on topics, or was there going to be somebody who was actually, you know, higher up, that's actually one in our, in our state legislature or whatever that sets policy that's going to be listening saying, oh, so they would see maybe the policies that they're enacting or they're moving forward on, or that they possibly could be voting on are being heard.
Yeah, it's the other two groups, Sacramento Homelessness Continuum of Care Advisory Board and.
Okay.
The Sacramento Steps Forward. I think you're going to see.
So those boards report.
Them implementing the, the issues through funding that they receive, but being informed by the local elected official from Galt, from Ileton, from Folsom and the like.
I just had a comment on this in reading through the staff or the report. It looks like there's going to be an advocacy arm, although it doesn't necessarily say that in the report, it looks like that's where this is headed. If you have an elected official from every city and two from the city of Sacramento and two from the county, along with these two homeless boards and advocacy groups, I think what will end up coming from this is not only our information to them about what services might be provided to the homeless in our region as a whole, but also, you know, the outgrowth of it may be legislation and as it relates to cities and local jurisdictions to provide whatever services comes out of it from the homeless. That's kind of my take on it as well.
I do see that it refers to having two members of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors, so that, I thought I seen that, that would answer my question directly, so we do have someone at a higher level sitting in, so. I will be interested in doing this if nobody else is interested in doing it.
I'd like to nominate Councilmember Farmer.
Second. All right, the motion made by Councilmember Lamson and second by Vice Mayor Lozano. May I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
Mayor Sandu.
Aye. Motion carry for five to zero. Thank you. The next agenda item is Community Development Department, Senate bill number two, planning grant.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers, Chris Orias, Community Development Director. As mentioned, the item you have before you is the SB two planning grant. If you recall, back in August of 2019, the city council gave staff authorization to submit a grant application in regards to this SB two planning grant. Well, I'm happy to announce that on December 10th, 2019, that staff was notified that we were awarded the full grant amount of $160,000. The state offers these grants to help spur housing production in cities and counties and we intend to use the grant for four primary purposes. One is to rezone select properties throughout the city. There's a couple reasons why we want to do this. We're going to need to increase density in some areas and some properties based on our upcoming housing element. The state is, or actually, we're going to get our RENA allocation very shortly, the numbers are going to be significantly higher than we're accustomed to and to meet the affordable component of that, I believe we're going to have to go through an exercise and look for some sites to rezone to high density. There's another part of that too, I think there is opportunity for higher density sites in the inner city that can help actually be smart growth and put those type of uses close to services. The second item is a cleanup of the zoning map. We currently have some inconsistencies between the zoning map and the land use map of the general plan. I think you witnessed some of that when we had to do a rezone for a historic house not too long ago in the Trail Ridge Apartments. So part of this exercise will be to make sure that the general plan, land use map and the zoning map are consistent with each other. And then the other, the third item is to provide a cleanup and update to the development code. In 2015, we did a comprehensive code update and since that time, we've noticed there are a couple cleanup items we need to complete. And then in addition to that, there are some state mandated items that we need to include and one is to update our code as it pertains to accessory dwelling units. And then the fourth item is to basically amend the general plan consistent with whatever changes we do with the rezone of properties. So this grant is a reimbursable grant, so in order to carry out the activities, we're seeking council approval to appropriate the $160,000. We'll use the funds to pay consultant invoices and then we'll submit for the grant funds for reimbursement to the city. Then we're also seeking council authorization toward a task order to Rainey Planning and Management to complete work associated with the grant. Rainey Planning and Management will basically undertake all activities related to planning, but they have subcontracted out the traffic component to GHD, formerly Omni Means. When we rezone the properties and do land use amendments, we'll look at the different traffic and trip generations based on the revisions. So that concludes the staff report. The council has asked to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to appropriate the $160,000 of revenue and expenditures for the state SB two grant funds and enter into a consultant services contract task order with Rainey Planning and Management to prepare SB two grant program deliverables. Once again, that concludes presentation. I'm available to answer any questions you might have.
Any councilman?
I have some questions, Chris. So first off, a larger question that comes up a lot from the public that I get usually preceding something like this is, why do we have to hire a consultant to do many things that are listed in here that sound like something that our departments could do? So I, I just want to simply touch on, what are some of the services that they'll be doing that we really can't do in-house and why would we? And, and talk to me how that relates with the grant money, if it can be used a certain way.
We essentially don't have the personnel to complete it. I mean, if we had additional staff, we could do that work. I mean, if you look at the work that Rainey will be doing, it's in the task order, reviewing the general plan and zoning code, doing a comprehensive investigation of sites within the city that could be changed for higher density, preparing all the materials, staff reports, presentations, doing. all the material, staff reports, presentations, doing all the printing of material, including some of the changes of the plans. If we had additional personnel, we probably could complete those tasks in-house. And then the traffic study, that's a component of this, certainly requires a certain specialty where we'll need to consult, or use a consultant for that. And then also, as a rule, we use consultants for all our secret documents, which is included in this. So this is another thing that, another item that Rainey Planning and Management will complete. So to answer the question, to me, the bottom line is, we don't carry enough staff to handle those type of tasks.
Okay. I did see that it had about 400 hours of the work on the breakdown. So just to kind of understand the, well, a few things. So one, the cost, basically, what you're asking council to do is approve for us to spend the cost at a Fund O One General Fund to be reimbursed from the grant.
Correct.
Right? So, but the grant is locked in, so there's no chance that we, something could happen and we just don't get the money back.
Correct. We've been successful with HCD grants in the past, and there's been no hiccups in getting our reimbursables to us. As long as we stay with what we're planning to do, which the application states, will be reimbursed.
And so, just for the public information, too, so basically, what bothers me about SB two is that the state of California is dictating to cities, this is how you should grow. We want you to grow fast and have this kind of housing. So you're kind of, they're controlling, they're taking away control of what we can allow, you know, in our community to develop. And I know people, I am an advocate for having, you know, I have two daughters in their twenties. I do feel that in the city of Galt, there is a lack of available housing. Either you're buying a house, you're renting a house, there's really not much else to pick from, so I'm an advocate. But on the other side, I understand, I share people's concerns in the community about, when you use the word low-income housing and high-density housing. You use the word inner-city, which I thought was really funny, because it totally triggers, because people just automatically stereotype something like that is going to be like this trashy apartment complex. But nothing in this that, as we are told what we have to do and how much high-density we have to have, it really doesn't, they don't get down into brass tacks with us being able to be very picky about, because I think personally the difference between having a good apartment complex, if you will, or townhomes or whatever, is property management. If you have, if you bring in someone who's going to move something together and have poor management, it's going to, it's going to be trashy. But if you have good property management, then you're essentially going to have a nice, clean complex. And so, so we're able to still control at that level, right?
Absolutely. I see the SB two grant a little bit differently. I mean, I think your point is well taken. I mean, with the historic, the state getting serious about housing production, putting higher requirements on the city is somewhat of a burden. I think we can accommodate it, but we have to accommodate it from a planning end. But the SB two grant, to me, is they're kind of putting their money where their mouth is. So they're giving us this requirement, but then they're also giving us some funding to help us meet some of those requirements, you know, at least again, from the planning end, not from the building end. You know, the other thing I always say that, we had needed to do a cleanup to the zoning code and zoning map based on the 2015 code update, because we know there are some problems with it. We know there's some inconsistencies with the maps. So we're getting some things we would probably have to pay out of general fund money if this SB two grant wasn't available. So the SB two grant was a godsend. And I do agree that the development standards and design criteria for multifamily housing or any housing can make a difference. High-quality, well-built homes, whether they're apartments or single-family homes, obviously do much better than those that are built quickly, cheaply, and then managed poorly.
So what do you see, so you clearly, I was going to ask you one of my questions was, what are your opinions, are there pros and cons of this, this big picture? But you clearly said the pros, which makes sense. I mean, what are, is there any other negatives that you see from a planning standpoint, from your position, other than just being told what to do, sort of?
Yeah, it's never easy to create more high-density housing. My experience has been the public tends to be a little bit resistant, but we're kind of used to, and I don't want to say fights, but, you know, trying to communicate better on why we need to do things. So that task will ultimately fall to the city staff. So we do know that we have a consultant helping us. I think one of the cons is going out and then trying to find these new sites for high-density, and not only trying to convince the property owners and communicate that to them, but then also their neighbors. And that could be a challenge. So we do have, I think, three public meetings included in that scope of work. So we do plan to do some outreach, and so that's independent of whatever plans we come back to planning commission and city council with. So we do plan to notify everybody who is part of a rezone or a general plan amendment with the third property's affected, and then, again, do outreach to those that, you know, are within the vicinity. But because it involves so many, so much property, we'll probably do general noticing to get those people involved.
And does that, does that touch on one, which is my next question? Tell me about the, where it talks about the community participation. I guess there's two, basically, they're going to hold two
Town Hall.
Town Hall meets. Is that basically just to get, to be, to try to educate people on exactly what all this is about, or is it to hear people's concerns about the type of housing? Or is it going to be like hearing people's input about specific, because at that, I mean, is there going to be a point where, when it comes to public input, we're going to have it, maps showing that we're going to change this from this type of zoning to this zoning, and we hear those concerns? Is that going to be?
That is correct. So that, our approach is different than the Galt Market Master Plan, where the Galt Market Master Plan, where we're going in with a blank slate, we do want people's opinion before we start putting pencil to paper. This is going to be a little bit different. We are, we as staff, and then the professional consultant, will go in with recommendations. So we'll look for properties that make sense, whether it be an infill, or they're good buffers to other uses, and sites that make sense from a planning sense. So we'll go in with those and then do exactly what you mentioned. You know, we'll give the background on why we're here, we'll give the background on why we chose these sites, and then just solicit input.
So to be clear, what I'm hearing from you is that there will definitely be public input
Correct.
on the zoning changes as we're changing uses of certain areas. There will be public input on that.
That's correct.
All right. Anybody else have any comment?
I have just a question, Mayor Sandu. How long is the work planned to be done? We're receiving $160,000. Is it expected to be done in a year, two years?
We'll probably finish in a year. I hope it doesn't go longer than that. I believe the grant gives us a year and a half, then with extensions. So my hunch is they'll give us a couple years to finish. And we've never missed a deadline in the past when it came to a grant.
Okay. Thank you. And just my last question is, can you explain higher-density housing? Because we, I get this question that comes up pretty regularly, and one of my interests is higher-density housing for seniors as well. And so could you talk about that and what that might look like?
So higher density for us is basically 14 to 24 units per acre. Now, the units vary. And recently, we've seen a variety of different housing types to meet that density. So, for example, Greenwood cottages south of Rite Aid, that's a high-density development, but they're at the lower end of 14 units per acre, and they got approved, basically what is a small lot subdivision, a single-family home on a small lot. Others are straight-out apartments. We just, the planning commission last week approved an eight-unit apartment complex on Second Street. It's at, I think, south of F Street. Its density is 20 units per acre. So even though it's only eight apartments, based on the size of the parcel at .4 acres, if you calculate it out on a per-acre basis, that is a 20-unit-per-acre project. So density refers to the number of units on a specific acre. Low-density, for example, your standard residential, single-family subdivision is anywhere between three and six units per acre, mostly falling into four units per acre. So high-density, I would say traditionally is apartments, but we've seen now a variety of housing product to fit that mold. And you're right that we do need more senior, high-density. And if you recall, the Dry Creek Oaks project does include senior high-density as part of it. We don't have a high, we don't have a builder for that site yet, but it did include that.
Thank you.
So could I point out, Veranda at River Oaks, is that high-density?
Close. It's actually a medium-high density.
Oh, okay.
I think that, it was 11 units per acre, and our medium-high density is eight to 14 units per acre. So it's, it's not quite high, but close. And those, so the state has requirements for affordability, and there's different ways to meet your affordable requirements. You could have your straight deed-restricted, affordable projects, which means that people who rent or buy that home must be income-qualified, and then the rent or the mortgage has to be affordable to them. So that's, there's a procedure that goes along with that. What's also eligible for the state, from the planning end, that meets their definition of affordable, is density. So the general rule is that in an apartment complex, a four-person family can live affordably in a two-bedroom or three-bedroom, two-bath, one-bath apartment. So they help us meet our need for affordability, even though they're not deed-restricted to those meeting income guidelines.
Is there, do they get down, is part of the SB two, or part of the housing, the bill, does it indicate like a certain level of like Section Eight housing and stuff like that, too, or it does not?
No. So the Section Eight houses, housing is what we refer to as deed-restricted. So they do not get to that level, we're not at that level with the SB two grant. I do believe that the state in the upcoming housing element is going to require the city to provide some sort of assistance for deed-restricted, affordable homes. So the next cycle housing element is coming due in 2021, and we're starting to do the early work prepared with that. Other cities do inclusionary housing. What that is, is if someone has, it's an inclusionary policy that requires home builders to have a certain percentage of their homes set aside as affordable. So for example, a 100-unit subdivision might have a 10% inclusionary requirement, requiring 10 homes to be set aside as affordable. Other cities have like an impact fee for housing development, and that money is pooled, and when it becomes a certain amount, they use that as a funding strategy to try to encourage like an apartment, affordable housing complex in the city. Elk Grove does that, where they have an extra fee for housing to go toward affordable housing. And then others use impact fee reductions, like reduced traffic impact fees or park impact fees. And the notion on the traffic impact fees is that, you know, generally speaking, those in the lower-income brackets don't drive as much as a single-family home, so the impacts to traffic are a little bit less. So some cities have used that as a mechanism to help fund affordable housing projects. What we're going to do, and ours, I don't know, we're not there yet, we'll reach out, we'll start talking about that when we start working on the next cycle housing element.
Well, overall, I just, you know, want the public to know, I'm not, I hate the fact that we have to be dictated on how we grow. It just kind of gets at me. But I've always been, since I've been on this council, and I made it very clear that I am in favor of infill development, if it's right. Again, I want to stress that because I do believe that there's a lack of a certain type of housing in Galt, especially for younger adults, you know. You know, I think, you know, things are changing with the new generation of people. They're not interested in owning, you know, having a lawn they have to mow, and they're just not interested in that, you know. I like the project that has a dog park that's coming up on the corner, at the corner of Krillion. So I think stuff like that's kind of interesting. But again, to me, it comes down to being specific, good property management, because I don't want things to just turn into something like we've seen some of our apartments in Galt. But not a favor of sprawl at all. So for me, it's all about, you know, making Galt better for the people that are here, which includes our children that maybe want to stay in this town that they grew up in, maybe they don't want to leave. And problem is, right now, it's like apartments, like, I mean, I don't know what the average apartment cost in town is. It's probably around $5,000. I mean, what do you think that is?
The new Trail Ridge, two-bedroom, one-bath, but they're on the lower end, we're going for $1,200.
Yeah, $1,200. I mean,
And they did help us meet some affordable
That's like, that's like double what my first house payment was. I mean, it's a lot of money for people starting out. So is there such a thing as affordable housing?
Right.
It's kind of a, but thank you for
You're welcome.
answers, Chris.
Councilmember Campion?
No, I've heard enough.
You know, I have a couple of question. One thing, Chris, you make a statement, we have no staffing to do because this contract in $160,000, right? And there is no even, there is a small part of thing we can do internally, and $160,000 contract, everything from general plan amendment to everything is, there is no, you have internal, there is nothing we can do?
No, we have, we've got a lot going on, and so we're already kind of stretched thin in the department. I couldn't imagine having another staff dedicated to this project alone to tackle. And it's, it would be very uncommon for a city of our size to have the staff to be able to accomplish this type of work. I mean, the county and some of the larger cities like Sacramento typically can do this type of work in-house, but the smaller cities like Galt, even Citrus Heights and some of the others, they would never, they would not accomplish this in-house. So the benefit really is, is that the grant pays for it. So, you know, there's no city funds going to it. But I will say, staff will be involved. I mean, it's, you know, everything will come through the department and make sure that anything that's going out, you know, meets city approval. So, you know, even though we have a consultant doing the majority of the legwork and the lion's share of document preparation, staff are still heavily involved. So there's still enough work with this project alone to keep us busy.
All right. My next question is, you know, when the general plan amendment and zone changing, and the report is, you know, the Rainey, they can, going to involve in a public outreach. What public outreach, and how they're going to public, what kind of thing they're going to do to property owner, as you say, or they can be like in general meeting?
Both. So with the public meetings, the way I would envision them is that once we have crafted some plans that we're ready to bring forward, we would reach out certainly to the affected property owners. They would get special invitations, but then also invite the public at large. So
You wouldn't do mailed notice within a 500-foot radius?
Correct. But if there's a lot of properties, we do have the ability to do a city-wide notification. So based on the number of properties involved, to do a 500-foot radius with each might be costly. So we can evaluate that, though, and if it looks like we don't have the number of properties affected, we could do more targeted and do the 500-foot radius.
Yeah. One of the biggest criticisms, least I've seen in the past, is if you do the general notification in the newspaper, people don't get that.
Yeah, there, I agree 100% that very few do pick that up. What I've noticed recently, once it gets picked up on social media, like I know the Galt Facebook
Then you get in trouble for not getting, giving them individual notice.
So lately, based on the growth of social media, we haven't struggled as much getting the messages out and attendance at the meetings. But your point is well-taken. It is important to make sure, you know, people who live nearby are aware.
All right. My next question is, you know, that contract is $160,000. That's a grand money, right, from the state? And the Rainey Planning and Management, why are we using that company? We, we have a previous contract, I think it's back in 2015, but that was a three-year. Or you feel, or your staff feel, this company is the best company? And did you also have any comparison to the same things they are doing, if somebody else will do, what will be the difference? Including this one, you know, we have $160,000 grant, and there is estimate is 159. So that's mean, we told them, okay, we have $160,000, make your plan. But they, they know before they give you the bid, we have $160,000 or something on side, they just come up with the same price?
I think that every city was eligible for a certain grant maximum. So I'm sure Rainey was aware of, because they're So, I'm sure Rainey was aware of, because they're posted on HCD website. So, you know, I think Sacramento, for example, was eligible for a 300, a double, $320,000 grant. So, it's, it's public knowledge on what we were eligible for. The reason we choose Rainey, Rainey did win our supplemental planning services contract in 2015 through a competitive process. Their original contract time was up, but they're on automatic renewals. But that process is coming up in a year or two where we will have to go back out and renew, go through that process again, go through a competitive bid process and get a, either new planning consultant or continue with Rainey. And my preference would be to continue with Rainey. Planning is kind of a, you know, interesting area where having institutional knowledge really helps the process. And we've, we've been very happy with Rainey Planning and Management. Cindy Ganos, the head planner for the firm, has worked well with the city for a number of years, even predating me. So, her institutional knowledge of the city has been an asset. I mean, she understands GALT, she understands our plans. Rainey completed our last zoning update. So, I have full confidence in like their ability. In my experience with Rainey, because we have, we have the ability to competitive bid the SEQA projects that would come in, we do have other consultants that are on the bid list, but Rainey always is more cost-competitive than any other that submits a bid. So, my feeling is, is if we were to use some other consultant, I think it's possibility that the costs could increase because of the background that a new consultant would have to do to get up to speed on the city. So, in my view, I'm perfectly comfortable with Rainey. I have no reservations about using them. My only fear is we're, we're getting them too busy. So, we, we do have a lot of work in the city going on and I will be coming back to you next month for another authorization of work order for SB 743. And I'm not going to go into that tonight, but it's another state requirement where we're going to have to change basically the way we evaluate traffic impacts for SEQA purposes. So, Rainey Planning and Management will be the consultant there again because we, again, have that comfortable relationship with them where they know the city, they work well with staff, and they have the ability to get projects out in a timely manner.
Yeah, thank you. The only, you know, I don't understand, you feel very confident with Rainey and they might be a very cost-effective. But I'm talking, we have to have some kind on the record, is, is something, it might be, if, if the other comparison bed we taking and we not considering, what is, is the staff time to get another bed or just you don't feel you have to go in the other bed?
It certainly does take staff time to go through that process and again, we are thin, but it is not the only reason or the reason why we don't do that. Again, we feel Rainey is the planning, the supplemental planning consultant, which they had won on a competitive bid basis, and we think this is the type of work that they had in mind and we had in mind when we selected them through that competitive process.
So, there was a process.
Yeah.
Of vetting the consultants.
Correct.
For cost.
Think back, counsel, just a couple of months ago, we went through a competitive process. It's actually not a bid, it's a professional service and so a different portion of the government code applies. You, you don't bid out professional services. What you first do is establish qualifications and then you negotiate a services agreement. And so, everything that Rainey has provided for the cost of this particular project is based on the hours it will take to complete the project and undertake that program for us, which again, is a mandate. But a few months back, we went through a, the, the process that Rainey went through apparently a number of years ago, which was on our on-call engineering firms. And we had a series of engineering firms, all that practice in particular areas of expertise. And so, the, the city conducted an RFP, they conducted interviews, they qualified those particular firms to undertake work on behalf of the city in these areas of engineering expertise, for instance. And, and so, that set up a multiple-year opportunity for those firms to be assigned task orders that they would undertake on behalf of the city. If we compare and contrast the use of consultants in that way to the hiring of staff, one of the things that comes along with the hiring of staff is the legacy costs of ongoing year after year employment, retirement, health insurance, you know, all the types of costs that you might undertake. And there comes a time in a department's life that you might need to make the determination to take on those legacy costs year after year. But for the range of skill and expertise that it will take to undertake this particular work product for the city at, say, 100, the $160,000 that we have to get it done, that would employ perhaps a, a, a single employee of that same skill level for a year, when you consider all of the employment costs from pay through all of the, the, the range of benefits. And then finding someone of that particular skill can be another tough nut to crack. So, you see that, I agree with Chris when he says that cities of GALT size, even cities larger than GALT in the 50, 70, 100, 150,000 will oftentimes use these consulting services as a means of mitigating down long-term legacy costs that come when you employ someone year after year after year.
Thank you. My next question is about traffic study. I believe on a report, they said 20 exit, on a report, it said 99 years and 99 Elm Street. Something on, on a, on a report, they said they have to do the traffic study in order to amend the plan and.
It was one of the four out of 20 intersections listed, or it was listed, there were any traffic study, that's what I was referring to.
So, basically, when we do rezones of properties and general plan amendments, especially when you're increasing the density of a property, you're changing then the traffic impacts associated with it. So, we had to undertake a, we have to undertake a traffic study to evaluate those impacts on the city. I think you have specific intersections that they're talking about looking at, because if you recall, in the first report where we got your approval last year in August, we had, we had shown you some ideas we had put on paper and so we had shared those with the traffic consultant. So, he used those as just kind of like a baseline.
All right, thank you.
Go ahead, sorry. How many people are in your department, just for the public?
We have, we currently have five. So, there's, we have a permit tech and a building inspector. We do have a vacant position, will soon advertise for. Then we have two assistant planners and me. The one assistant planner though, we call her our hybrid Swiss Army knife position where she does a little bit of everything. We don't have enough work for a full-time administrative assistant, so she picks up a lot of that duty in addition to backing up the building permit tech and, you know, providing them minor planning activities. So, she'll do, you know, business licenses that come in, building plan review as it relates to planning. And then the other assistant planner does more project-related work and then other special tasks. And then, you know, I'll stay involved with the higher-level projects along with keeping an eye on all the other projects that are going on at the time.
Do you see, just my last question, I promise.
That's all right.
Do you see in the big, in this big, at the end of this whole thing, when it's, when it's all settled with the rezoning, do you, do you see a big change in a lot of properties or do you, what do you foresee in your opinion? How many, how many properties switching, switching?
Initially, I thought it would be a handful of small to mid-size properties, I don't want to say in the inner-city, but in our more established city area where we do have some vacant and underused lots where I think we can do better with density. But we may have to search outside and look at some of the new growth areas for density and maybe in particular along Twin Cities Road and some of the new annex areas. So, there's a, it's a mix. I would heart, I think we actually had in the original request, an idea of an acreage that we had in mind, at least on the properties we were looking at. And unfortunately, I just don't have that with me at the moment.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you. Any public comment on?
I'd like to know, may I read that, recommendation action?
Adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to appropriate $160,000 of revenue expenditures for the state Senate Bill Number 2 SB2 grant funds and enter into a consultant services contract task order with Rainey Planning and Management to prepare SB2 grant program deliverables.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion move by Councilmember Campion, second.
Second.
So, second by Councilmember Farmer. We have a road card vote, please.
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
Mayor Sandu.
Aye. Motion carried by 5 to 0. Thank you. Next agenda item is Public Work Department, subject water meter data collection service contract. Mr. Selly.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, the item before you here is to consider a new service contract for water meter data collection. What basically happened here is, like in 2015, I believe, the city contracted, let it contract out to put water meters in on all the residential and commercial accounts. And so, that contract was awarded to Fathom, also known as Global Water. And so, they had been, they basically did the work initially to put in the meters and then also they did the ongoing, well, they're electronic meters and so the, the meters themselves will transmit their data to these data collector units, they're seven spreader around the city basically geographically. So, the, the, the data goes from the meters to those data collectors and then the data collectors are dumped into a server which Fathom would then marry up with our database file, if you will, on all the, the accounts. So, they would match the meter read information to the accounts and then that information was transmitted to the finance department who would then do the billings off of that. So, fast forward essentially, they had been doing that since 2016 when the meter installation was complete. And at that point, they were taking that data, merging it in and providing that service to the city. We got contacted by Fathom back in late October last year and basically informing us that they had been in, you know, I guess incurred some financial hardships and were trying to essentially sell their business to other competitors. And they had a couple interested, but neither one really pulled the trigger on the deal to buy Fathom out and, and their customer base, which would include the city of GALT. I guess they had several other cities around the country. I think there were about another three or four at least in the state of California besides us, but they were in other states as well. So, we were informed that basically due to their financial hardships, they would be shutting down their servers as of, I think it was December 17th or something like that. So, we had, you know, whatever, seven weeks or so to basically scramble and try to find a new service provider for the service. And while there are lots of companies out there, we found out that do a lot of the billing service and they, they have, you know, online services where people can check their water usage and things like that, there weren't too many that were able to take the data from the particular units that we have on the meters and match it into the database, particular database file that we have. So, we were, you know, beating the bushes to try to find some companies that do that. The company that actually makes the hardware units, the meters, or, yeah, the meters and the reader, or the, the transmitters, I should say, what we call the MTUs, the meter transmitter units, as well as the data collector units, which is the DCU in, in the acronyms that are involved in this, is called a CLARA. And so, in contacting them to see if they knew of anyone who, you know, could provide this service, they said, we're looking into it. And then we ended up, you know, getting a determination from them that yes, there were other cities, essentially other Fathom customers that were in the same boat as the city of GALT that was, that were also contacting a CLARA. So, a CLARA said that they could then provide this service. We also reached out and were able to find another company called Manol, they're out of Texas. CLARA's out of Missouri, no, Missouri, I think it's Missouri. And anyway, so got bids from both and determined from the bids, which you can see in the table in the staff report, that a CLARA was significantly more cost-effective than Manol's bid. And so, we're basically, you know, asking for the council to consider entering a contract with a CLARA to take on this service for the city. With that, I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you.
I have a few questions. So, first off, you mentioned, yeah, I mean, it was 118,000 versus 47,000, that's like a significant difference in the bids. While I am happy to hear that we're going to get such a great deal, also raises a concern, you know, I being a contractor myself, you know, the low bid, when it's significantly low is always a little scary, like, ooh, you know, what's the service level going to be like?
Right.
Do you think that the reason they're able to do this at such a more, a lower level is because they in fact are the people who actually manufacture the equipment? So, they, maybe they're just more efficient in doing that? You think that's the reason why?
Yeah, I think that that's a big part of it, Councilmember, that they essentially, since they have the hardware, they really have a vested interest to make this work. And it is only a one-year contract, so, you know, essentially, it'll be a trial period, if you will, and, and, you know, we'll see how well they do with this. But I would say that as a, you know, maybe not so intentional, but the way I think we view it as staff is, they, they essentially made a, a good faith effort in downloading the data from the Fathom servers before they were shut down back in mid-December. And, you know, they did that at their own cost. You know, there was nothing from the city, we did not pay them for that. So, they took, took that data to, to basically have that continuity of data for the city. So, we've got that historical data that was on those Fathom servers. If it had not been for a CLARA doing that, we would, we would not have that data to, to look back on, so, for historical information. So, I, I guess the roundabout way to answer your question is, yes, I believe because they have the hardware, that they definitely can, can do this more efficiently than a third-party, which Manol would have been.
So, we used to pay Fathom $76,800 a year and with a CLARA, except for the first year, which is there's a, there's a setup or something.
Correct, about $19,000.
Right. After that, it's like $28,000 and change.
Correct.
After that, so significantly, less than half.
Yes, yeah.
Actually, about half.
Yeah, that was a pleasant surprise, so.
Okay. The only other concern I have is I was looking through the contract and it talks about, you know, support and, you know, over and above, you know, so my company, we do maintenance contracts where you know, you're essentially for X amount of money per month, customer gets X amount of support, so on and so forth, and there's certain things required depending on the level they get. I saw here that we're actually getting what they consider the premier, which looks like their highest level, but then it also talks about things that probably aren't going to be included where there's billable hours. So, my question is, I just want to be sure that we're not getting caught into something where we're like, you know, the entry price looks really good, but the man is going to cost us up, you know, on stuff, they're like, well, that's not included, so that's going to be extra. I mean, we have no experience with this company, although it sounds like great, you know, they make the product, they're going to service it, everything looks good, but I just, you know, I, I know, I guess the only way we can really tell is moving forward in a year from now, looking back, but I just, again, it was just a concern of mine with seeing that it was a premier service that we're asking for, but yet there was a lot of verbiage in here about, you know, pre-purchasing, they want, they're talking about pre-purchasing extra support hours. So, I'm like, why would we need to do that if we're already getting the premier package?
Right. And we share that concern. We've asked, we've had a few conversations and email exchanges with them, you know, basically asking questions like that. So, you know, you talk about, you know, these upgrades to the software, you know, are we going to be nickel and dime for that kind of thing? And how often do you do those? You know, what can we expect? Those types of questions. And they. And they, they clarified, no, just minor, they do quarterly minor upgrades. Those are, those are included essentially. It would only be a significant major upgrade, like from a version 1.0 to 2.0 kind of thing is where they would essentially look to, you know, get those costs. That, that would be something that we would have to pay for, so.
Then my final question is going to be regarding just the water meters in general. There was talk when they were put in, and again, I wasn't here, I know Kurt was, you know, involved at whatever level, if you were working in the city or in council, I forget, but when those were put in. So is, when, when is the life expectancy of it? And when do, is it just the hardware? We're talking about these DCUs and the other thing? Or is it the meter itself has a life expectancy where it has to be switched out?
Yeah, they do, we do have issues with them on occasion, but we've, we've had really good service from a CLARA, basically, you know, providing us new units when we have had to swap them out. And I'm particularly talking about what we call the meter transmitter units, the data collector units. Those, my understanding is that we haven't had any real issues with them at all. And, and I think as you saw in there, there is a, essentially a mandatory upgrade to those data collector units that's, as a result of the telecom industry going from 3G to 4G service. I guess the 3G services, we've been told both independently by Verizon as well for our cellular services, that 3G is going to be shut down by the end of this calendar year. And so they need to upgrade those units. But again, you know, we've had good service with them and so we don't expect, you know, any surprises there, so to speak. And we would hope that would be the same on the software end.
Do you remember Kurt, what the, when you guys, when the meters went in, what the, there was talk of expectancy of like how long these meters were going to go?
I don't recall.
I can check with staff and get back to the council.
But the meters should last, have a long longevity.
Yeah, well, the meters, yes. Yeah, I think it's more that, that electronic transmitter unit. Yeah.
I just remember hearing something chatter for the community, like saying, you know, there was a mandated, they mandated, the meters were mandated by X year. And because we went in early, they were saying, well, if we go in early, now we're cutting into the life expectancy by so many years. I, I, I just, that's the reason I was asking.
Yeah, I can, I can get back to you on that.
I think that's all the questions I have at the moment.
All right. Any more discussion? The only thing I have are just the clarification, you know, the faith that company, we have a contract, and I believe they was in a solvency or in bankruptcy, right?
Correct.
And that's why we have to look another company to replace that, right?
Correct.
And we get a comparison bed from two company. And the company, I believe, Elka, that's why you, that's why staff's recommending that.
Correct.
And that also, I look at the report, is very cost effective. So this is also on a one-year contract too, right?
Correct. And there are five one-year extensions, subsequent extensions, so.
With escalators.
Potentially, correct.
So I don't have problem to support this. Any public comment on that? Any staff, anybody want to make any? Can you make the recommendation action?
Adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a one-year contract with a CLARA with the option of five one-year extensions to manage the city of Galt water data collection system. The initial contract amount is for 48,000 per year. The following annual contracts will not include the one-time setup costs, but will include a 5% contract escalator for the ongoing services. Two, authorizing the city manager to execute a one-time contract with a CLARA for 32,560 dollars and 50 cents to install needed upgrade, upgrades for the seven data collection unit. And three, approving an appropriation in the amount of 51,858 dollars in the water plant budget from Fund 005 available reserves.
I just, one last quick question. The, the five-year extensions, is that on consent of both parties or is it just they, they automatically?
It's essentially an automatic renewal unless.
So it's up to them? So if a year, we don't, we're just like discussing with our service, we're tied in?
Correct.
Essentially, it's not really a one-year.
Well, we can, we can cancel it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, no, we, we can unilaterally cancel if we choose. Yes.
Do we have a motion to?
So moved.
Motion moved by Councilmember Farmer. And second by Councilmember Campion. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
Mayor Sandu.
Aye. Motion carry on five to zero. Thank you. Next gender item is communication. There is no communication, city clerics report.
Nothing.
There is nothing. Comment by staff. Ms. Tyson.
Nothing from me.
Mr. Selly.
Nothing to report, thank you.
Community Development Director.
I've probably spoke too much already, but I do want to give you an update on the Galt Market Master Plan. We are targeting a couple dates for the community outreach. The first meeting is tentatively scheduled for March 9th and the second for March 30th, both Monday nights. We're planned to go six to 8:00 PM. We'll have a location published shortly. The first meeting, the goal is to intro the project, do a background on why we're here, do a little bit of Q and A, and then also start soliciting feedback and ideas from those who are participating. Shortly after that meeting, we'll look at sending out an online survey to Galt residents for feedback. And then the second meeting at March 30th, that's when we plan to start putting pen to paper based on some of the feedback we receive at the first meeting, and then coming back to that second meeting, asking for ideas, additional ideas, and then actually putting it on paper. So that's the update on the Galt Market Master Plan. The only other thing I have is congratulations, Chief, on your recognition. That's awesome.
Well, do you have any comment? Okay. Ms. Bentstone.
No update.
Mr. Selys.
Yeah, I just wanted to let everybody know that we're currently accepting registrations for adult softball, youth softball, and then beginning March 1st, our swimming lessons and Galt Cater programs will be accepting registrations.
Chief Sockman.
So we've had a kind of a busy, busy couple of weeks, but I want to mention that Vice Mayor Lozano and I went to a meeting and a presentation from the League of Cities and the California Police Chiefs Association on the Keeping California Safe Act. It was in 2018 that this council signed a resolution in support of that act, and it's going to the ballots on the 20th. We're gonna, it's, it's really, I encourage everybody to look at that website, it's keepingcalifornia safe.org. And it explains what the, some of the amendments and the changes that the, that are being proposed in this legislation for some modifications to Prop 47, Prop 57, and AB 109. There are a number of things that are no longer violent felonies. You can see in the retail markets how these repeat offenders keep stealing just under $950 worth of merchandise, which that is passed on to us as consumers. So that changes some of that. And then there's some changes in the DNA collection. So it was a great presentation, and so they did a great job. The Galt Police Department, myself and staff have been meeting for the last two years with our, the African-American community here in Galt, trying to continually improve relations, trying to understand history, both from the police department, from the community's perspective. And so for, like I said, for the last two years, we've been meeting with them. And so it's been a, a great meeting, a better understanding. And as a result of that, I just got invited to the San Joaquin Delta College Diversity Day this Thursday. So I'll be going to speaking to the college students about the efforts that we've made here at the Galt Police Department. And hopefully that will spread through other departments, because I mean, I think our success rate has been extremely high on that, so. Those are my updates.
Thank you. City manager, Mr. Haglund.
Nothing further.
City attorney.
Nothing further. Thank you.
Councilmember Campion.
Nothing.
Councilmember Lamson.
Nothing more.
Vice Mayor Lozano.
I do have a couple of things. First, is it possible for staff to reach out to Liberty Ranch Cheer Squad and see if we can't have them come in and do the flag salute? They just won a national championship, and I think it'd be kind of a cool opportunity to have them come and participate here at City Hall. So that was the first thing. Second thing was to kind of piggyback on what Chief Sockman was talking about and the legis, the proposition that's going to be on the ballot. I think it's going to be important for our community to, to really understand what it is, because there's a lot of misinformation about what it is out there, and it really isn't. But I think one of the things that really hit me during the presentation was the, there used to be a law on the books that said if you were a petty thief and you had already committed a theft crime and done any kind of jail time for that, future petty thefts were a felony, was a felony. And so then you went to jail and you went through the process. Well, now, there's kind of a loophole, and our businesses are, all up and down California are getting hammered by thieves just running in and walking out with stuff. And obviously that, as the chief mentioned, that drives up prices. And, and I, so I think we can do a lot to help support our businesses by really promoting the education of this in the community. And so that's one thing. I think the other thing that really, and I knew this before the presentation, but when they presented the fact that domestic violence is not a violent crime, just blew me away. And then the rape of an unconscious person is not violent, as it stands in the law now. And so those, those are two examples of just how Prop 47, Prop 57, and AB 109 have really turned up and changed the landscape of our communities. Fortunately, we live in Galt and we have a great police department that does an awesome job. But I would submit that much of our homeless issue has to do directly with those three, those three laws. And so would it be possible, Chief, and I know you have a couple of presentations that you've done on this, and Ron did that presentation the other day, but however you feel it would be appropriate, maybe roll something out. I'm thinking maybe, you know, midsummer or something, to really, really get it out to our community so that they know that we have supported it by resolution and, and get the information to them.
Absolutely. We can either, I mean, I can do the presentation. I've done it a couple times already in different locations, so I'm happy to do that. And then I know through the presentation that Crime Victims United, the president, she was there, and so was the League of Cities and then Cal Chiefs, and they're all willing to go and travel and, and do that presentation also. So whichever direction the council wants to go, whether it's me or having some, someone from those groups come, either way, as long as we can get the information out to the, to the public.
Yeah, I think that's important. I think if, if, if you feel comfortable with it, it would be, I think, important coming from you. You're our law enforcement leader here in our, in our city and, but no pressure, right?
No, I'm happy to do it. It's, I, I'm, I'm well versed on the topic. I can talk about Prop 47 all day long and the effects that it's had on our communities. I think one of the biggest issues, so when we're looking at homelessness throughout the state, there's a direct relation, correlation to the increase in our homelessness and Prop 47, because what used to be drug offense, where you would go to, get arrested and go to jail, and then you have to face a judge in three days when hopefully you're in a more sober state, and there, you're offered drug rehabilitation, that's under Prop 36. Now that option doesn't exist because it's, it's a non-bocable offense. If you have, we used to be a felony drug in your possession, the police take that from you and give you a ticket and send you on your way. And so that just leads you down the street to go get more. And so there's, there's no dryout period. And so there's a lot of studies that show that that is, there's a direct link to the homelessness, which increases the mental illness and it, and keeps people on the street longer, so. But, yeah, so anyway, I'm real, I'm happy to do the presentation.
Awesome. Thank you. That's all I have.
Councilmember Farmer.
Yeah, a couple things. What was the second date of the other, March?
March 30th.
March, so March 9th is the first one. March 30th is the second. And where are those going to be at?
We're still looking for a site, but we think Chabola.
Okay.
But we got to clear that, those dates.
Okay. Yeah, and I like Vice Mayor Lozano's idea about the cheer. That would be really cool. I'm going to come do that. And only I would like to add is just to encourage people, the Galt Beautification Committee's having their monthly community cleanup this Saturday. What's the date on that?
22nd.
Saturday, the 22nd. They're meeting at BMD, which is the construction supplies company on Elm Avenue down by the road tracks. So that's where they're meeting. So if you want to bring out your family, we've seen an uptick in participation and want to see it continue to grow. It's a great event. We do community service hours, so if you have children that need community service hours, they, they give that. Plus, you know, helping pick up the community is, is just a great thing. And, and they're covering, we, they pick a certain area of town each month and, and clean that. And I think this month, there's even a bunch of people from, I think the police department has some people, TJ Goodati reached out to me and has a few people, he's going to be coming. So we hope we have a good turnout. The weather should be nice. So I encourage everybody to come out. If you're watching, young kids are encouraged, you know, teach them, you know, the importance of keeping your community clean. Come out. Usually lunch is provided, right?
Yeah.
Not doing the lunch anymore? Okay. Well, bring your own lunch. Bring your picnic lunch. And so anyways, at BMD at nine o'clock, right?
Right.
Nine AM, BMD this Saturday, if you want to just show up. And we have all the supplies. So that's it for me.
Congratulations to Chief Sockman, getting recognized by the President of California Police Chief Association.
Good job keeping that a secret, too. I didn't know. So, sounds like you knew.
That was a surprise presentation. And I also like to thank you all, the community member, they come to join this meeting. And I also want to encourage the people to come to the city council meeting. That's where we can discuss or make a public comment, what your thoughts are. If there is any other comment, if there is no comment, I would like to adjourn the meeting. Thank you.[1646.53]